Hi. That working?
Yeah, it works.
All right, let's go ahead and get started. Looks like we're all here. Actually, Susie's not here. Is she gonna be here tonight? All right, let's get going and we'll see what she gets here. All right, let's go ahead and call tonight's meeting in order. Welcome to August 3, 2021, study session for City Council. Can we start with the roll call, please?
Mayor Bagley.
Here.
Councilmember Christensen. Councilmember Doggo Ferring. Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Peck. Mayor Protem Rodriguez. And Councilmember Waters. Mayor, you have a quorum.
All right, great. So let's go ahead and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I find it amazing that we can do that so in unison, but on the Zoom calls, it was a mess. So just, yeah. All right, and then let the record reflect that Councilmember Susie Doggo Ferring has entered the building, and she's taking your place here at the dais with us. All right, let's go ahead. Just a reminder, you can also view the meeting at www.lawmontcolorado.gov. Anyone wishing to speak during public invited to be heard, last chance to get your name on the list outside, so go ahead and sign up. The call-in feature as of August 1st will no longer be available now that we're back to in-person meetings. So let's go on. Any motions to direct the city manager to add any agenda items? Councilmember Christensen.
I would like a brief update on the COVID Delta variant and what the school system is going to do in two weeks and that sort of thing, and how we're handling it from the city manager.
Okay. That's all right. No, that's all right. Let's just go ahead and put it on, meaning I was getting to say the same thing. So let's have a, I don't know if you can do that tonight, or if you're ready for that, or if you can.
I can do a quick overview tonight during the city manager comments.
Let's do that, because I know that, I know that we've gotten a lot of questions on that, so. Good enough tonight, okay? Councilmember Christensen?
Oh, yeah.
All right, cool. All right. Okay, then let's go ahead and move on to public invited to be heard. So we've got a shortlist tonight, but let's go ahead. Kathy Kemper, you're up first. And if you could each state your name and address, that'd be great before you begin, and then we'll start your time. Do you want to do this, or go nuts? Actually, go right there, and then, let's see here. I don't think I can control that one. I don't have the magic numbers. Perfect.
All right, that should be good. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Kathy Kemper. My address is 524 Nesting Crane Lane here in Longmont. I live 460 feet from the night well pad in Longmont. And the purpose of my time tonight is to provide some feedback to you on the fracking operations in Longmont, specifically those next to my home. My spouse and I built this house at the end of Nesting Crane Lane for the quiet and solitude of the street, the space and the views. We enjoyed watching the neighbor cows graze to our east. Little did we know that the plans to develop that property were in progress for energy production. Finding out that our neighbor had sold his mineral rights for development was a shock, and I worked really hard to learn as much as I possibly could about this potential operation. Unfortunately, it was a little too little too late. What I learned that this developer, Cub Creek Energy, was strategic. They pulled a permit to drill a 24-well pad six weeks passage, six weeks prior to the passage of House Bill 181. I highly doubt this permit would have been issued under the new rules under that bill. Although we were told by the technology company supporting the developers that those impacted would be allowed to comment and informed when it was time to do so, the process and communication was very unclear. We learned too late that we missed our window of time to make a comment, who we were not who were we not to trust the experts in the field of how that process occurs. Again, we were all learning on our street and in the neighborhood. Not that comments from any of us or, you know, or near the site would have changed anything that happened, but to have the opportunity to voice our concerns should have been an easier process. And I know that this council was involved quite a bit back in the 2016, 17, 18 with everything that occurred with, you know, energy drilling in the area. Let's fast forward to September 2020, when the drilling began. The spud drilling was not so bad. I didn't think it was, but it was the giant rig that came in February of this year that marked the beginning of the true process. It's nothing like the idyllic political commercials touting how clean, safe, and low-impact these drill sites are. They are loud, bright, smelly, swirling, rumbling, uh, operations of activity that never cease. For me, the worst was the constant vibrations 24/7. My house vibrated all the time, almost imperceptibly, to the point that I was doubting myself that it was really occurring. But it was enough to make my skin crawl, especially in some sections of the house. It wasn't until I returned from a week of travel in March that I realized it was for real, and it really was affecting my, my mental and emotional health in this house. Fracking began last week, and the most annoying piece is the misguided fracking trucks who rumbled down our street because they claimed the GPS sent them there, backing up on the cul-de-sac at 1:00 a.m. in an attempt to turn around and leave, or better yet, the few that tried to access our driveway last September, thinking they could get to the drill site from our house and our property. And let's not forget the potential, am I out of time?
You're out of time, but I do know, I do know that this council is very sympathetic to what you're saying, though. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much to the city for providing the, the support agency with Jane Turner and her team. They have been amazing and really great, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Lori Ashland, or Laura Ashland, I'm sorry.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. It's great to be represented. A little closer, I have a very low voice. I will be brief. This is not as big a deal as variants in school openings and drillings, but I notice as a traveler along Main Street that there are some parking issues between the Avenue of 10th Avenue and 8th Avenue, especially around 10th Avenue, where Cambio Torres has a building, and there are three parking spots right on Main Street in front of these businesses, as should be, but there is space to park in on right on 10th. There's no signs, so people could park in these open spaces, and Cambio Torres has their own spaces signed off. But what happens is we have traffic coming down Main Street at about 30 to 40 miles an hour, and they're dead stopped to get into Dutch Brothers. There's no way to form a line to the side, so my suggestion is, is there any way to look into, and I know parking in Main Street is very difficult right now, and it's a whole issue, but maybe the experts that could work on the parking, I feel like those three parking spaces should be not there, because their clients, customers can still park around the corner, and there have been rear ends there, there have been all kinds of trouble because you're flying at a certain amount of speed, and it's, you don't expect to stop. And this is like the Starbucks line for Dutch Brothers to get, to get in, and it's just a dead stop. So I've been wanting to talk to you guys for about three years about this, and I just see this keep happening and happening, so I thought I'd bring it to council. And also in front of Sherwin-Williams, between 9th and 8th, there are two parking spots there that are not necessary. People are losing their mirrors, they're so close, I mean, it is such a hair breadth between the side of your car and the parking there, and there is plenty of parking space between Sherwin-Williams and the vacuum cleaning shop there, and plenty of parking space in those businesses that kind of runs, they face south, they're not on Main Street, and I realize that they have to have a place to be, but on the street is seeming to be very dangerous. People are getting out of their cars, and those cars go by so quickly, so I thought I would just have, bring it to your attention, maybe somebody could take a look into, especially by the Dutch Brothers and the Sherwin-Williams block. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, Sharon Malloy.
Good evening. Sherry Malloy, 2113 Rangeview Lane. I'm here tonight as a representative of SRL's Zero Waste Committee. Our ZW team has helped promote composting signups, organized our monthly community cleanups, and held in-person events and presentations about the six Rs: rethink, refuse, reduce, reuse, recycle, and rot. In the last 18 months with COVID, we've done several webinars, including Food Waste and the Climate Connection, Living a Zero-Waste Lifestyle, Food Preservation, and most recently one called The Scoop on Poop and Other Unmentionables. We're committed to Longmont being greener and cleaner by empowering people to become active in earth and climate-friendly lifestyle choices and changes. Why am I here? In December, staff gave their waste presentation, and several of our ZW members spoke to various aspects of Longmont's waste program with concrete suggestions for improving services for residents while diverting valuable resources from the landfill. With commercial trash factored in, we're sending 76% of the trash we generate in Longmont to the landfill. 80% of this can and should be recycled or composted. Our SRL team has identified three priorities. These include, one, to provide universal residential composting-like recycling; two, require multifamily units and commercial recycling by establishing a universal recycling ordinance; and three, to significantly, significantly improve outreach and education. We've also included re-establishing hard-to-recycle events and adjusting subscription rates to provide more incentives. All of these continue to align with the city's Sustainability and Climate Action Task Force plans. Incorporating these priorities will make a big impact to provide the most benefit to increase landfill diversion and to combat global warming. To fund these needed improvements, we need to increase our waste management fee. Our fee is ridiculously low at $2.96 per month per household. In Loveland, where the diversion rate is double ours, residents pay $11.50 a month. Our committee continues to be grateful for the continued willingness of staff to communicate with our team. We're happy a hard-to-recycle event is being planned. While we're disappointed in the timeline for developing language for a universal recycling ordinance, we're glad this is moving forward along with strengthening the rather weak zero-waste resolution passed by another council in 2008. We've had 13 years of the carrot with very disappointing results, and it's high time for stronger political will and policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malloy. I'm gonna sly, I can't read the last name here because it's smudged. Bart Monapo, and then whatever that last letter is. Oh, did he? Okay. We shall, well, I want him to come back now, because I want to know his name is. All right, and I guess we can't call him this last person. He didn't put his last name down. It just says Strider. So without knowing who that is, we're gonna go on with the rest of our meeting. Mr. Benston, come on up, come on up.
Strider Benston, 951 17th Avenue. Couple of things. I'd like to point out that there is a quasi-extension on the rent moratorium for two or three months, so people who are almost on the verge of being evicted right now might have another two or three months to find a job or get functional. There are so many things going on, I'd like to speak more locally, but I just learned today that two more Capitol policemen committed suicide that, recently. That makes, I think, five who have committed suicide. The travesty and the, you know, dealing with an insurrection to destroy the United States as a viable entity and as a democracy and as a republic is, the, the consequences are still going hardcore. The, there were, a caucus leader in Congress was arrested because she was singing. Bishop Barber got arrested again today because he went to the Capitol, but the 15,000, the mob of 15,500 or more who invaded the Capitol to destroy our country, no one was arrested that day, even though at least five people died as a result. And let me, my friend Jimmy Collier, who I learned afterwards is, was 19 days older than me, and we met on the March on Montgomery. Pete Seeger's wife took a photo of us that's on the cover of a record album, Freedom Songs, Elma, Alabama. Jimmy, to get out of Fort Smith, Arkansas, he's a black man, he lied about his age and joined the Air Force when he was 15 years old, and so he would already served his time and been out before the Vietnam War got full scale. And he got brought down from Chicago where he was a folk singer and blues singer, and we met on the March on Montgomery, and he's the one who got me out of jail at midnight on my 21st birthday, otherwise they would have killed me there. Jimmy died about two years ago, and I haven't seen him since that night. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Strider. Always appreciate you. All right, let's go on to special reports and presentations, and if we can have just, Harold, what's going on with, I mean, I'm, I was, I was stuck on a plane, they weren't letting anybody, even U.S. citizens, back into the States unless you had, you have a test that says you're COVID negative, even though I've had COVID and I have my two shots from Pfizer. So I want to know what's going on.
I'll try to pull this over. Mayor, council, this is a little harder for me now that we're not online, because before, when we were, I had big screens, and I have small screens now, so, you know, it's a, it's a bit of a challenge for me. So we're gonna start off with where we are right now in, in terms of the vaccination rate within, within Boulder County, and when you look at this, we're, we're at 79.4% on the vaccination rate, and that's actually really good when you, when you look at where a lot of places are from a county perspective. As you dig into it and you look at the vaccine doses administered today, we're averaging about 302. You can see there's a substantial difference where we were earlier in the year. And then, when you look at this, this is really the breakdown in vaccination by age in Boulder County, and so the good news is, when you look at the 50-plus, you can see that we're over 86%, even 40 to 49. And then it really is the 12 to 29 where we're lower, and then obviously 0 to 11 because vaccines haven't been approved for use in that age group, and I'll touch on that a little bit. One quick slide, so you can see the vaccination by race and ethnicity, and you can see that there are differences in this arena. I would point out that Carmen is still working with Boulder County Health in trying to, to do that. You know, what was really interesting for me is Saturday, we had an event, a night-out event at Lanyon Park, and we were providing vaccines there. They actually provided 23 vaccines at that location. They were actually, believe it or not, really excited about 23, because in most locations they go to, they're, they're happy if they break double digits to kind of get a sense of what's happening in the world. When you look at vaccinations across the metro area, you can see 73% of the 12-plus population is vaccinated, and so we're spending a lot of time on vaccinations because really that's starting to be the crux of the conversation as we move forward. This gives you a sense of what's happening in Boulder County, and obviously, we're still working to drive that percentage up. If you look at this area in terms of where it's dipping into Longmont, and, and we're focusing on that, hence Lanyon Park the other day. When you look at cases, what's everybody responding to? You can see the uptick in the curve in terms of the number of cases. What's interesting is if you really put it in perspective based on what we saw from the beginning, you know, when we were moving up that peak, we would have been happy with this number at that time. This is the big piece of information, so when you look at it, the majority of the cases are actually associated with the Delta variant. And this one's hard to read. What I can tell you is, when I look at our wastewater monitoring, it is corresponding with the number of cases that we're seeing, and, and what, what we've heard is the Delta variant is the dominant variant in, in the state of Colorado and probably everywhere else. And, and I'll talk a little bit about what they presented to us later. Case trends, you can see what's happening in the case trends, and, and you can see the age group that's really spiking. It's at 0 to 9, and I think if you hear about the Delta variant and what's really going on, it, it, that one versus the wild variant is, younger age groups are more susceptible to it. And so when you hear me say wild, the wild variant is really the original strain of the virus that came in, and then Delta is the, the current strain that's dominant in, in the area. This is an interesting chart, because if you look at among youth, and this is rate per 100,000, and then the count, you can see that last week to the previous week, we went from 6 to 12, and then 5 to 9, we went from 6 to 29, but then when you look at that 10 to 17, the numbers are a little bit different, and that, that does sort of correspond with the vaccination rate that, that you're seeing. In comparisons of age, 05 and 6 to 11 and 12 to 19, summer 21 and 22, you can see the differences where this is, we're seeing it more within the younger age groups. And then when you look at it broken down by race and ethnicity, you know, really the good news in this chart is it's more proportional to the population compared to where it was at the beginning of the pandemic. And then when you look at the breakdown by communities, 25% of the cases in Longmont, 35% in Boulder, but what you're really starting to see is those other communities that have traditionally been smaller segments of this are actually larger segments of this. And then we get into hospitalizations, because this is a key number, so when you see level blue, that's what the governor really talked about in terms of what are those triggers as we look to additional steps in this, and you can see that in the dark red line, Boulder County is still below the metro area, but the metro area, while we're increasing, we're quite a bit lower than we have been in previous points in the past. And then when you look at deaths, they remain low. I think the actual number, let me look at a different piece of information. Well, we've had seven deaths in Boulder County since May 1st, for a total of 263 deaths, so you can see that it, it's different. And then testing is now starting to go up, but you can see the positivity increasing, and that's really a quick look at the data. What I will tell you is Thursday afternoon, we have an administrator's meeting. They called a special meeting last week to kind of go, tell us, here's what's going on. I think everyone's waiting to see what's gonna come down from CD-PHE and Boulder County Health on this issue, so we will know more Thursday. We'll obviously communicate with council. What, what's really interesting about the conversation is this is about vaccines. And when you look at the numbers and you look at, and there was another piece of information, I wish I would have had it, we'll, we'll find it and send it to you all. When you look at the actual numbers of those, there are breakthrough cases, so you gotta start there. There are breakthrough cases for those that are vaccinated. That's actually not unusual with any vaccine. I think the efficacy rate of this traditional flu vaccine is like 50, 60% at times, so we know there's breakthrough cases. But there's, when you look at it on a percentage basis, there's not a lot of breakthrough cases. And then as you start diving down into the data in terms of hospitalizations and deaths associated with those who have been vaccinated, the number's pretty low. And, and so this really then is, based on what we're hearing, is really about vaccines. And so I think everyone's trying to reconcile right now, where do we go in the future and what does that look like, as, as they contemplate additional orders and how that's gonna come out. The crux of the conversation is really this. What they do know about the Delta variant is that people who are vaccinated can carry it and can get sick. The Delta variant, what they're finding in people that are vaccinated, tend to have more copies than they did with the wild variant.
More what?
Copies, so a copy is the amount of virus that they have. And so when we look at our wastewater, we were poured in copies. And so when we look at our wastewater, we were poured in copies. They do have more copies compared to what people who had the wild COVID virus had. And then it's then impacting those that aren't vaccinated, and that's tending to be what they're seeing that's driving the numbers. And so I think that's what everyone's trying to really wrap their arms around right now is, well, what does this mean and how do we move forward? Because if you're vaccinated, you can get it, you can get sick, you can get hospitalized. And I believe there have been a handful of deaths. But when you look at it numbers-wise, it's much different than those that are unvaccinated. And that's really the crux of the conversation and will be briefed on Thursday in terms of how they proceed. I know that they're having conversations with the state and locally about how they approach schools and what that's going to look like, especially because of the zero-to-eleven age group, which hasn't, has not been authorized for a vaccine at this point. So I really think within the next week or so, we're going to hear more information. I told you I was going to be out next week. This is probably one of the meetings that I'll jump in remotely to see what's going on during that timeframe. But we're waiting to see. We're evaluating what that looks like for our organization and how we move forward. I'm hoping within a day or so to have an approach that we can utilize to continue to encourage folks to get vaccinated and how we're going to work and serve our residents on a daily basis. That's a quick overview. If you have more specific questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
All right. Thank you very much, Harold. Appreciate it. All right, let's go on to Longmont Economic Development Partnership Quarterly Report. All right, and then when it's done, I guess, who wants to thank the presenter? You can take turns. You do that, Joan. Your turn.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley and council members. Jessica Erickson, President and CEO of Longmont Economic Development Partnership, here to provide our second quarter report. If I can figure out how to use this. Nice digs, by the way. This is my first time here. All right, so I'll start out by reminding you all of our contractual strategic objectives. The Economic Development Organization for the City of Longmont, which includes strengthening Longmont's competitive position through implementation of our economic development strategy, Advanced Longmont 2.0, marketing Longmont nationally and globally as a premier destination for industry and talent, supporting the creation and retention of quality jobs, particularly within our targeted industry sectors, advancing opportunities for entrepreneurship and innovation, and advocating on behalf of all Longmont businesses. And so our work plan on an annual basis focuses on three of the areas of focus of the economic development strategy, which are talent, industry, and impact. So I'll start by talking about our work in the talent focus area. Our first objective is related to recruiting and retaining talent, marketing and recruitment being Objective 1.1. I'll remind you that we in twenty, my timing is off, in late 2018, I believe, we launched, or no, I'm sorry, early 2019, we launched a economic, or I'm sorry, a talent attraction, national talent attraction marketing campaign. What we've recognized and what we've heard, both anecdotally and we've seen in data, is that COVID-19 has shifted how and where people work and how people make decisions about where they live and work. And as a result, we're working with our marketing contractor to adapt our campaign in a post-COVID world, and we anticipate launching a new kind of people-first campaign later this month, actually at our board meeting on Monday. 1.2, Objective 1.2 is to improve workforce perceptions of Longmont. We closed our workforce perception study. I'll provide a little bit more detail on that in a later slide. On July 10th, we had two-hundred-and-seven responses to that survey this year versus sixty-two in 2020. We released preliminary results, and our full report will be presented to the Longmont EDP Board Meeting on August 9, 2021. So on Monday, your council members, Martin and Waters, are representatives from council, but you are all welcome to attend that if you're interested in more detail. Relative to our workforce perceptions study, just a reminder of what we look at with that is the perceptions of our local workforce related to both lifestyle factors, a set of lifestyle factors as well as a set of career factors that we present to them as part of the survey. The two questions that we ask is, which of these factors matter most to you in selecting a place to live? And second, how do you rank Longmont relative to each of those factors? So I'll point out a couple of things on this chart. I realize you don't see the grid lines that I see. We have four quadrants that we're looking at. Those factors that are extremely or very important to people, where Longmont is not performing excellent or good, and then extremely very important where we are performing well, and then not so important and not so great, as well as not so important, but we happen to be performing very well in, from a workforce perceptions perspective. So I think not surprising to anyone, cost of living and housing affordability remain the top in terms of importance, as well as where Longmont as a community, from a workforce perceptions perspective, is not performing very well. Where we saw the most significant transition is that housing availability piece. Used to be in the very important quadrant, and we used to be performing very well in a year ago. And now housing availability has been added to cost of living and housing affordability as a place where it's very, very important to people, but we're not doing so well from their perspective. The other most significant shift from a lifestyle factor perspective has been that almost a hundred percent of respondents to this survey noted that safety within their community was extremely and very important, which was not the case just a year ago. And so certainly that is impacted by all of, not just COVID, but all of the events of 2020 that have really resulted in some cultural shifts. And then when we look at career factors, most of those factors have remained the same year over year in terms of what quadrant they appear in. The one that does not is the wages factor. And I think that's just an indication of a reminder that this is a perception study. So wages haven't gotten worse in Longmont since 2020. But I think the national conversation around living wage and what people accept as a living wage, in combination with the overall increases in cost of living and cost of everything in a post-COVID world, have impacted how people perceive their wages at their jobs here in Longmont. Again, we'll have more details, including a full breakdown of the demographics of the study, when we present the full report on the ninth. Our second talent objective is to develop an industry and future responsive talent infrastructure, which includes Objective 2.1, looking at talent, intelligence, data, and infrastructure. So we recently completed our Elevate Longmont surveys, which is our existing industry survey that will ultimately result in our State of Industry report, and found that seventy-nine percent of our respondents, which are primary industry employers, identified finding talent with the right skills as the top workforce challenge that they face today. We hosted a skilled workforce executive roundtable on the 29th with seven participants, and results from the survey and the roundtables are undergoing analysis and will be published in our State of Industry report in mid-September. Objective 2.2 is supporting our existing talent system. So that's our school district, our workforce development, and our community college system by putting information about the availability of those resources in front of prospects that we're working with, both existing industry and those looking at relocating or expanding into Longmont. And so we've continued to do that very aggressively throughout the year this year. We are, I want to point out, migrating to a new CRM to better facilitate tracking not just the fact that we're putting this information in front of folks, but what they're doing with it and what the outcomes are. Going next to our industry objectives, the first is primary industry expansion and retention. Objective 1.1 there is the use of state and local incentives. We are going to pick back up the work, actually later this week, of looking at the City of Longmont incentive ordinance to better align that ordinance with the vision, goals, and priorities of the community relative to how we're investing dollars in future projects as incentives. And we have seen the approval of no new economic development incentives so far in 2021, although we may have some in the near future. I do have some North Metro Enterprise Zone data later in this report as well. And then our second objective is relative to generating prospect leads, and with the goal being fifty on an annual basis. And so far this year, we have generated twenty-four new prospect leads, and I have some more detail about that again in a later slide. So looking at North Metro Enterprise Zone, so far this year, we've had two-hundred-and-sixty-five businesses pre-certified to use the program. And you'll see that we're not meeting metrics on all of the other categories because the first step is pre-certification, then the next step is certification. So we'll see as people file their taxes later in the year and actually claim those tax credits, we'll see those numbers of certifications and tax credits used go up. And then, oh, sorry. As of the end of Q2, we had eighteen active prospects in our primary industry pipeline that represented the potential for just over thirty-five hundred jobs, that averaged wages of eighty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars, with a potential to add one-point-eight billion dollars in capital investment into the community. We do have a handful of announcements that I can share with you. Of course, we saw the announcement that AGC Bio is acquiring the Novartis campus, also known as the former AstraZeneca, former Amgen campus. So we have another pharmaceutical company that starts with the letter A that will be acquiring that campus. We are optimistic because AGC is growing very rapidly internationally, and they are a contract pharmaceutical manufacturer, so they're not dependent on a single product or a single drug for their long-term viability. We also had McKesson, a health IT company, sign a lease for thirty-two thousand square feet. An existing aerospace company, Honeybee Robotics, expand by fourteen thousand square feet. And Coolbeads Ice Cream will relocate their manufacturing and distribution from Denver to Longmont. Provide a little bit of detail on the Elevate Longmont survey results. We had forty-two respondents, and we've provided some detail about the size from both an employee and average annual revenue perspective, so you can get an understanding of who the respondents to this survey are. So average number of employees, seventy-four, average annual salary, seventy-three thousand, and average annual revenues of just under five billion. The top takeaways from that survey are, no surprise, that housing affordability and cost of living are the top issues that primary employers are facing today because of its impacts on, because of the impacts on ability to recruit and retain talent. Number two being talent supply shortages impacting employers across all industries and positions within the city. And then the third kind of just interesting takeaway that we saw was that regional connectivity ranked as important, but we say the most underrated issue because while employers recognized its importance, showed less willingness to engage in addressing the issue. So that's a conversation that we're having about how we can do a better job of engaging primary industry and addressing the issue of regional transportation connectivity. And then just some next steps for the Elevate timeline. I already mentioned, we're currently doing analysis of all of the results of this survey, and our State of Industry report will be released on September 13th. Our second industry objective is around entrepreneurial development, the first being the management of Innovate Longmont. I'll remind you that we spun that out as its own separate organization in late 2019, early 2020, as a result of some personnel changes in both organizations. We've kind of brought it back under the umbrella of Longmont EDP. Stephanie on my staff is, at least in the interim, stepping into the role of CEO and President of that organization, and is preparing for the next accelerator program that will run September 13th through November 15th, and will focus on smart manufacturing companies. We're also continuing to partner with the organization Startup Spaces to build our no-wrong-door ecosystem for entrepreneurs in Longmont and bringing together other entrepreneurial service organizations to support what will ultimately become the Longmont Entrepreneurship Hub using the Startup Spaces platform. And then finally, impact. Our first impact objective is around organizational alignment, and the number of active Advanced Longmont 2.0 collective impact initiatives we have ongoing. In the talent focus area, we have four ongoing initiatives in industry two, in place four, and in connectivity four. And then we are working on development of our shared data dashboard, which will help you all, as well as us and the general public, track progress of Advanced Longmont 2.0 and its impacts on our local economy. And we expect to launch that before the end of this year. We also have Objective 1.3, which is to increase private sector funding for economic development. I have a funding table that I'll show you shortly. We did experience the same thing that many nonprofits, almost all nonprofits, did in 2020 and early 2021, which is a reduction in funding from the private sector. We were able to secure two PPP loans in 2021 totaling a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, and now those were able to carry us until we're now able to start to recognize improved private sector funding results. And so what that looks like, we're projecting this year that the combination of public and private funds will have a seven-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand-dollar budget, about fifty-fifty between public and private sector funding, or I'm sorry, not fifty-fifty, about sixty-forty between public and private sector funding. And again, in comparing that to previous years, 2019, we were at seven forty-six. 2020, we dropped to seven oh-nine, and we're ramping back up this year. This is not inclusive of PPP funds. Then our second impact objective is collective problem solving. As part of this objective, we formed the Aspire Leadership Council, which now has twenty-eight members with representatives from primary industry, finance, real estate, construction, local business, legal, and marketing, that are contributing their collective talents and expertise to COVID-19 recovery efforts, both in terms of financial support as well as, again, their expertise, time, talent, and treasure, we call it. And the primary areas of focus of our leadership council are on workforce, housing, and talent. And then our general overview, we saw in, sorry, this one's hard for me to read, we saw three-point-three percent job losses in 2020 resulting from COVID and related economic shutdown, although we still have seen positive job increases over the last five years, two-point-six, over the last five years, two-point-six percent from 2015 to 2020, which is still ahead of the national growth rate of one-point-three percent. We are seeing projections of about one point, or one percent job growth in 2021. We currently have a five-point-six percent unemployment rate in Longmont. And then when we look at that in terms of our targeted industry clusters, our knowledge creation and deployment cluster was our best-performing sector throughout COVID and now in 2021, with two-point-six percent job growth in 2020, from 2019 to 2020, and now projecting another one-and-a-half percent growth this year. Our business catalyst sector is looking at having the highest projected upward trend of two-point-four percent job growth this year. Smart manufacturing, again, no surprise to anyone here, was hard-hit, but is projected to recover well. So while we saw four-and-a-half percent job losses in that sector, we're seeing, we're projecting growth of one-point-four percent this year, and even faster-paced job growth in future years. And then our food and beverage industry, of course, was hardest hit by COVID-19 with almost fourteen percent job losses from 2019 to 2020, and we're continuing to see job losses in that sector in 2021. And I believe that is my last slide. I also did provide for you in your packet our quarterly commercial real estate update for both office and industrial. So I'd be happy to answer questions about both the report and presentation, or any questions you have about kind of the status of commercial real estate based on those reports as well.
All right, we've got a few people here. Councilmember Peck. Oops, sorry, hold on, mic on. You're good to go.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Thank you, Erica. This was a great report. Can you go back to the talent objective slide? I had one question about, on that one.
Tell me when to stop.
There. Shoot, let me find my. So you had said, and it wasn't this one, but that there were seven, seven people, maybe it was the next slide, at that, at that one meeting that you had.
Yes.
Okay, this one. Skilled Workforce Executive Roundtable, Hail Tuesday. And then you said the next bullet point is results from survey and roundtables. Did you have more than one roundtable?
We did. So what we did with the results of the survey, because we did the survey online this year, which is different than how we've done it in the past historically. We've had volunteers go out in person and survey our businesses, and not being able to do that last year or this year. to do that last year or this year, we set up a structure where we did an initial survey online, and then based on those responses, we looked at which challenges and issues rose to the top, and then we hosted roundtables that focused on those areas. And so the roundtables that we hosted were the Skilled Workforce Executive Roundtable, we hosted a Transportation Executive Roundtable, COVID-19 Recovery Executive Roundtable, and Housing Executive Roundtable. So the results of all of those conversations will be incorporated into the State of Industry study.
Okay. It just made me nervous when you said the results, and there were only seven participants, I thought.
Oh, yeah.
That's not a very good survey.
Yeah, no, so what we did is we, for the roundtables, we invited folks that had responded to the survey, saying that these were significant challenges for them, and were expressed an interest in being followed up with as part, following on the survey.
Do you have any kind of data on how many people took the survey then? How many participants over all of the roundtables and surveys? Or Zoom calls, or whatever you call them?
So we had, so we have approximately 250 primary industry employers that we attempt to contact on an annual basis. We had 42 of those respond to the survey, and then the people that participated in the roundtables would have been survey takers, because again, we reached out to survey takers to say, who said that these were challenges for them, to get a bit more in-depth in those in-person, well, in-person virtual roundtables.
Okay, great, thanks for that.
Thank you.
Dr. Waters.
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. Thank you, Jessica. During the open forum, we heard from the LEDP Board Chair, Eric Wallace, who was making the appeal to us to work harder and smarter, I think, to be on the same page, to be, all of us, city, LEDP as an organization, and your members, in the same direction. He reflected specifically on process issues within the city, and whether or not time, which equals money, and there's commensurate value that goes along with that. And there so was a rigorous discussion about that, which was all helpful. I'm just curious, without, I don't want to put you on the spot here, but if you'd like to, I'm going to ask, would you like to expand on that at all in terms of, from your perspective, when you, you know, wake up in the morning, or you're just over coffee with your board members, and you say, gosh, I wish we could be pulling the same direction on this, or on the same page on that. From your perspective, where are those areas that we ought to be paying more attention to in terms of pulling in the same direction, or the page we ought to be on with LEDP?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley, and Councilman Waters. I think the singular issue that we are most focused on as most critical and most telling of how we are going to look as a community 50 years from now, is the issue of workforce attainable housing, and the absolute need for policy to align with process, to align with vision, in order to ensure that we're able to house everyone who wants to be housed in this community. We respect and we support the truly affordable subsidized housing component of that, but what we are concerned about is that mid-tier, that housing that is attainable to the largest percentage of our workforce is getting lost in that conversation. We have yet to identify as a community, a targeted number, a goal for the number of housing units that we need in order to make that a reality. And we've recognized that, and when I say we, it's our investors, it's everyone, it's a conversation that we're having on a daily basis. It consumes almost all of my time in terms of conversations with those who are interested in bringing that product to the community, employers who are desperate to find a solution on behalf of their employees, and also on behalf of their businesses' ability to continue to recruit and retain quality talent, and just in general in the community. It's also concern of my own personally, as kind of a young family in the community, and our, our ability to continue to stay here and live here. And so while there are other issues that we're looking at and addressing, I think we're at a tipping point relative to that issue in terms of who we want to be as a community going forward. Do we want to continue to be a welcoming and affordable community to everyone who works here, or do we want to close our doors? That's really where we're at, and our interest is in maintaining an affordable and welcoming community, in particular for industry and their workforce here in the community.
Is it fair, if I were to reframe, not reframe it, but classify what you just said as a mission, and that, you know, to be successful in achieving what we need to achieve, we all need to own deeply and commit to the mission of attainable, continuum from affordable to attainable housing.
Absolutely.
And that has to be deep in this organization, as deep in this organization as it is in the hearts and minds and conversations of your membership, or your partners, or your investors. Is that fair?
Yes, that's very fair.
So I, I just say to the mayor, at some point, I think that we need to come back to this question as a council, on, on what does that mean? What does it translate into in terms of annual goal setting, and accountability, and performance appraisal, and all the things that have to be in place to move an organization, especially one as large as this one, in a, in a direction with, with people with disparate kind of work assignments, all pulling in the same direction? One, one related question, on your, on your three takeaway slide, one of which was affordability, housing and affordability, the other talent supply and regional connectivity. Kind of a parallel question, what is it that, that if you have like one, you know, message to leave with us about what you need from us in each of those three areas, is there, is there a message to say, yeah, get this, then this, and this, and do them simultaneously, or here's the priority of the sequencing?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Waters. So I would say there are three things that we would love to work with you all on. One is to identify the, and agree upon the data and the answer to the question of what the problem is, and what the scope of it is, and scale of it is. So what, what is the delta between the number of attainable housing units that we have in the city right now and what we need in the future, agreeing upon what that number is? What is attainable to 80 to 120% AMI? What is the AMI number that we're using in order to determine that? The second for us is, and when I worked in the governor's office, we used to say this about legislative sessions, if our, if we had one primary goal, it would be that no harm is done, or do no harm. So consider when you're enacting policy, the impact that they're going to have, those policies are going to have on the affordability of housing for our workforce, and really consider kind of the cost benefit of analysis, the cost to affordable housing versus the potential benefit to whatever the issue is at hand. And then the third would be to continue the work of, and collaborate with the private sector, who actually has to work in this environment, and to bring us the product that we need in order to create an attainable housing environment, to continue to work on aligning policy and process with vision. You've stated, we've stated, everyone's stated that part of our vision as a community is to have a full spectrum of affordable housing for every resident of this community, and we need to ensure that policy and process are aligned, ultimately aligned with that vision, because there are some things that exist today that prevent this city from being able to achieve that vision.
Councilmember Idalal Ferin.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So I want to circle back to the wages, you know, so we saw on that grid.
Yep.
That we had cost of living, housing affordability, housing availability, and then almost in the same spot.
Yep.
You see wages as some, as a target that isn't being hit. And, you know, I, I understand, you know, it is, it is perception, I understand that piece, but it's also too very concrete in the sense, you know, you either have enough money to be able to afford to pay your bills, your rent, or your mortgage, daycare, or you don't. And so what I have seen, and you know, so I'm on the bargaining team for the, for our district, on the union, on the teacher's side, that we do our collective bargaining for our salary schedule and our master agreement, and, you know, our just, our wages are not keeping up with the cost of living. You know, what we spent 100, you know, $100, you know, 20, 30 years ago, looks very different today, how far it goes. So, so there are things that are in the scope that, you know, employers can control, and that is, you know, looking at those, at, at the wages, you know, we, we look at it, we analyze our budget. You know, it's, if we want to keep, if we want to recruit and retain high-quality teachers, we also have to pay. So, you know, there's, there's that, that respect. How, how often do employees, or maybe, I don't know how many businesses in our community other than the school district and the city have union representation? Are there union representatives, you know, offering the perspective of the worker?
Thank you, Councilmember Idalal Ferin. There is effectively no unionization in the city of Longmont, in any of, in particular in our targeted industries, which is true for Colorado as a whole, because of the kind of unique policy that we have.
Yes, yeah.
And so, but I will say a couple of things. I certainly don't want to overlook that wages are an issue.
Yeah.
Or say that it's just a perception.
Yeah.
It was just, it, what I intended to say is it's interesting that what, what was perceived as good wages a year ago are no longer perceived as good wages today, for a variety of reasons. One being the national conversation around what is a living wage. The other, of course, being how, how much more expensive it is to live today than it was even a year ago, in particular with the supply chain challenges that we're having today, and their impacts on the cost of literally everything right now. So, so a couple things, a couple of the conversations that we're having, I mentioned that we're going to reconvene the work of updating our, or making recommendations for the update of our incentive policy. And one of the things that we would like to incorporate into the incentive policy is that any company that would be incentivized using city dollars would be required to pay a certain wage for all jobs that they're bringing into the community. And certainly, we, you know, we get pushback from companies that aren't paying a living wage when we work with, recruit, bring in new companies that are paying above averages or above living wages, because that creates competition for them and pressure for them to bring their wages up. And I would say, pushback on me all day long, that's the goal of what we're trying to do, is quality jobs and opportunities for everyone in our community. And if one project that we work on forces others to meet that challenge, then I think we're doing our job.
Okay, yeah, thank you for explaining that more in depth. It's like, you know, I kind of assumed that, you know, you're, you're talking about this, you're working, but it's really important that the public know as well.
Yep.
That these conversations are taking place, and, you know, that, that we always need to be advocating for, you know, wages that can offset the cost of living.
Right.
And it's just seems to be, keeps, keeps going up.
Yeah.
But, you know, and the other thing, I was talking to a resident, and it actually was right before here, I, we spent too much time talking, so I gotta get, I gotta go. But, and it was about housing, housing affordability, and having that same conversation, you know, while the city's so focused on, you know, the subsidized housing, and, but, you know, I'm, I'm thinking people are kind of, you know, we wear two hats now, as for LHA.
Right.
As well as what we're doing in the city capacity. So some of the, the conversations that I'm hearing that are going on, people are, are looking at what we're doing under the LHA, not necessarily what we're doing as a city.
Sure.
So it's, you know, I think when I, I visualize, like, really putting, changing hats in these roles, so it's with two different goals and objectives. But I think, you know, as a city, we really, we do need to be focusing more on, on getting and providing the workforce housing and looking for solutions for that, so.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley.
Okay, worked.
So those last two questions made me think of two more questions. So when you say that businesses have to pay a living wage to come into Longmont, what do you consider a living wage?
We haven't landed on that yet. That's something that we'll work with the city. It's, so when we started this work, and we started having that conversation around incorporating that into the incentive policy was two years ago. So again, as we've been having this conversation, that's changed, and pretty significantly in the, over the course of the last two years. So we'll work with whatever, I know the city itself sets a living wage policy, so it will probably align with that.
Okay. And then you did have one slide, when we were talking about wages, that the one company or the example was $84,000 plus a year, as the average wage of that company. I'm curious as to how many employees that company has, how many of them are on the upper scale end of that, and how many the employees are not? Because an average wage incorporates all of it. So that would make a real big difference to me. If we're talking about 400 employees and 10 executives all making $300,000 a year, then this average wage is really going to be skewed.
Yeah.
So that, that's important to me, when, when we talk about a vision and how many developments do we need in the upper AMI? It depends upon how many people we're talking about in these businesses. How many employees do they have? How many? Because if they have employees making $40,000 or $30,000 a year, that's a very different story. So I was just curious about that.
Sure, thank you. So you might be referring to one of two slides, and so we showed this slide, which is, this is the prospects that we're currently working with, so primary industry companies that are considering location or expansion in Longmont. The average wage that they pay is 80, it's one of the questions that we ask, so is $83,663. But this goes back to, and you make a very good point, that goes back to why we would like to see the incentive policy change to ensure exactly what you're talking about, and exactly what we have seen, because the criteria right now is based on an average wage, is that if you have a small company with a seven-figure C-suite, and the rest of the employees making below a living wage, they can still meet that average wage criterion. So we recognize that that needs to be changed, and that's part of what we're working on in terms of our recommendations for changing the incentive policy. And then relative to our Elevate survey, so of our Elevate survey respondents, the average annual salary being paid was $73,619. But then we also asked the question of, and when it says here, average hourly wage, what that is, is the average production, entry level production wage is $19.59 an hour.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How's that little baby?
She's amazing. She's 17 months old.
Wow.
She's walking and talking, and.
Just, I'll just, glad, glad.
You'll meet her someday.
Yes, someday, someday. Next time, bring her.
Okay.
All right, cool. Thank you very much.
Be careful what you wish for.
No, it'd be awesome. We'd love to see her.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the first study session item, although it feels like the
All right, can I pull the slides up here?
Which one is it?
It's, yeah, thanks.
I got it here.
Yeah. There we go. All right, it's been a while. Mayor and members of City Council, I'm Bob Allen. I'm Director of Operations in Public Works and Natural Resources, and as our old friend Sarah Levinson used to say, "We're here to talk trash tonight." So we have, we showed you this very messy slide back in February, after a meeting with you in December, where we discussed in pretty good detail, kind of the future of waste services, and tried to get some feedback from you as to what you would like us to pursue. So I promise I will never show this slide again, and I will use a slide created by my esteemed colleague Lisa Knoblock, that kind of breaks this down into a little more visual, pleasant visual here. So there were four areas that we brought to you back in February that came from kind of distilling down the comments that we had from you and the community. of distilling down the comments that we had from you and the community. Four areas, I call them strategic areas to work on. Education and outreach programs, the hard-to-recycle programs, and I should say the education and outreach. A lot of what we discussed at that time focused on expanding the Green Star program. We'll talk a little bit about that tonight. But as we work on these other areas, this education and outreach will be imperative to any progress we would make in the other program areas. Hard-to-recycle HGR, hard-to-recycle programs, trying to increase opportunities. Zero-waste, really, you heard a speaker tonight, Sherry Malloy, talk about the zero-waste concept, and it really is kind of the centerpiece of what I think we're working on. And the universal recycling really will feed into that considerably or at least back and forth feed to each other. But right now, the zero-waste program is one of the imperatives that we're working on so that we can really lay the groundwork, I think, for all of the four programs. Quickly, just to show you where we're at with waste diversion in Longmont, you know that we've been in this 35, 36% range for a little while now. In 2020, we popped up to 41%. Anyone want to guess why that was? Anyone? Yeah, the, the pretty obvious point that so many people were working at home, that the residential rates did go up and that was a trend that we expected. Now, that's not to say that waste diversion necessarily went up in Longmont because it shifted from commercial to residential, and there are a number of commercial entities that do recycle and compost. So we just don't have the data or reliable data to track that. But certainly, we see the opportunity when it's shifted over the residential side to really increase that. This year to date, we're at 44%. We think that will probably be higher than 36%, but the first half of the year tends to divert more waste than the second half, so we expect that to come down a little bit over time. And then on the composting program itself, we have now almost 7,000 customers, 23% of the community. I'll say it again, that our consultant at the time that we crafted the program said that with a, you know, an opt-in approach, we'd probably eventually end up at about 25% participation. She didn't expect that it would go much beyond that without some other changes that would drive more participation. So the amounts collected, almost 8,000 tons, and the greenhouse gas offset is about 6,500 metric tons, which is equivalent to almost 17,000 cars off the road. So that's progress since 2017. So education and outreach, I mentioned, that's been focused so far mostly on the Green Star program, on trying to kind of build that so that it, it's expanded to more schools. This is a program that we implement in collaboration with EcoCycle. You will see this year a budget request for us to add more funding into that program so that we can actually make a little bigger change into next year and garner more participation, more schools into the program. So you'll see that in your budget requests this year that are coming from staff. Hard-to-recycle, we are still hopeful, and this is the long game, but we're hopeful that we will see regional facilities that will do this one day, even parts of it, like, you know, maybe construction demolition. Obviously, we're talking about possibly a compost facility or transfer station, things like that really bring the best long-term solutions. But we did hear some criticism from the community that we could do more in the interim. And so that's something that Charlie in particular has really been working on, is trying to find a way to bring at least some, some programs that are similar to what we were doing before, like programs where residents could come and bring hard-to-recycle items to, you know, a local facility that we could then, most of it would end up at EcoCycle's Charm Facility in Boulder. But we think that there are some options here that look attractive, working with a local contractor, working with EcoCycle, and maybe trying to spread that out over multiple days instead of the problem we had in the past, which was hard to recycle on one day where cars backed up and the facility got really busy and the workers were overwhelmed. That was really not a good approach, and we think that we may have some options to do this differently. We're looking in the range of about 25,000 to 45,000 dollars to do an event. We would like to try to do one this year. We think that we, we could do one maybe in November. I guess I'll call it a, maybe a beta test. I was warned not to call it a pilot. So, so we, we would like to try that, but it's not in the budget. So one thing we're asking for you tonight is your direction as to whether or not we should bring back an appropriation this year for an event. And we probably won't know the cost for another month or so, but we would like your direction on that so we're not just showing up here randomly with that appropriation. Zero-waste.
Can we, can we address that now?
You may.
Does anybody care, does anyone, is anyone opposed to giving the appropriation? Or at least coming back? I move that we actually direct staff to move forward with the appropriation and come back in a month and not be so random.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right. Thank you.
Want to talk a little bit about zero-waste. Lisa Knoblock was going to be here this evening to do that, and she had her mind wrapped around it probably better than any of us because she's been intimately involved. However, Annie Noble has agreed to stand in for her, and so I'll turn it over to you, Annie.
Thank you, Bob. So maybe you could go to the next slide.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Yes.
So both the Sustainability Plan and the Climate Action Recommendations Report addresses waste diversion. You might remember that the Climate Action Recommendations Report really focused on increasing commercial and residential composting.
Uh-oh. That's not good.
What?
I'll do it. What's going on there?
Okay, this works. And the Sustainability Plan had four target areas that it identified. So the first target area was to decrease the household residential trash to less than two pounds per capita per day, and we've met that, that goal. We are very close to meeting the goal, as Bob mentioned earlier, about increasing the residential waste diversion to 50% by 2025. And then we're still working on getting a baseline on all the commercial.
Sorry?
The commercial diversion. We don't have that information yet. But these goals will be updated when we update the Sustainability Plan, which is happening later this year. So we're getting close on the residential side. So as far as the zero-waste resolution, Lisa's working on that resolution, updating it. As Sherry Malloy mentioned, that was passed in 2008. We're hoping to bring, to go do some community engagement out this fall and then in the spring bring that back to you with a proposal. So we're working on that. Next slide. And so the areas that we're really focusing on are the areas that are in green. So what's shown in black text on this slide are already addressed in the zero-waste resolution. The areas in green are what we're looking to incorporate into the resolution. So we want to add more specific goals and really look at equity and focus on equity. So we'll be bringing that back in the fall. So I think with that, I'm turning it back over to Bob.
All right, I'll pass that slide. The last topic of the four, universal recycling ordinance. This was a slide we showed you back in February. We have not really begun work on this. We want to make progress on the zero-waste resolution and thinking or strategy first because this will kind of position itself on top of that. We'll start work on this in September. You know, this can take many, many forms, and it's going to take a lot of outreach and community collaboration to make this work. So we expect this to be a longer process. And I would guess that we would bring back a number of alternatives because universal ordinances, which are really ordinances that can, that really in effect require that the service be provided to everyone, whether it's commercial or residential, usually composting and recycle along with the trash service that they all receive already. Obviously, there are a lot of different ways that could be crafted or structured, and so we are going to want to have a lot of dialogue with the community and in particular with council on that as we start working on that. So that's kind of a little bit toward the back end, but it is coming. We mentioned back in, I think it was December and February, that we were not in need of rate changes right now for revenue purposes unless we change programs or build facilities or do other things that would drive that need. So we're not there yet, but the planning that we're doing could lead to direction we receive from you that could then cause us to come back for that conversation. Otherwise, everything staying the way it is, we're probably a year away from starting that conversation, maybe a little longer even. We do, and we mentioned that the city has a waste management fee. It's $2.96 per month per household for residential entities, whether it's multifamily or single-family. It is not extended to the, to the commercial sector. Extending it to the commercial sector could raise somewhere around another 100,000 a year. The revenues from a fee like that have restricted use in Colorado. We can't use it just for anything. Right now, we use it predominantly for things like trash in public facilities and parks, illegal dumping collections, the education outreach programs. It can be used for assistance programs. So for example, if we had a universal recycling ordinance, it put maybe an inordinate burden on smaller businesses or multifamilies that, you know, don't receive that service now, that, along with what's being collected now, could be used for assistance to kind of help with that. So your options there are going to be, you can expand it to another sector or you can increase the fee that is currently charged. We do not have any recommendations there. We're certainly like to hear if you guys would like us to do any outreach or collect information on that and bring it back, you know, and one of the next times we update you, we could certainly do that. And that was our presentation tonight.
All right. Who would like to, all right, Councilmember Waters? I guess you want the mic on.
Well, I don't have to have the mic on, but it would be a fairly private conversation between Bob. Just a couple, just so I understand, that when, under the heading of public engagement or stakeholder engagement, will it be, will you go to the public with this whole plan for feedback or is it more targeted on fees, for example? Or, and, and the appetite the community has for whatever that fee increase might be, given the benefit of universal recycling or composting for multifamily dwellings, that kind of thing? Help me understand kind of what the focus of that would be.
Mayor and council, I think that the best way to answer that question is it would be mostly targeted depending on what we were working on. But obviously, all of these start to link together.
Yeah.
Particularly the universal, the zero-waste, and any fee changes or rate changes that could be used to, you know, bring in infrastructure or equipment for those programs.
I should have said rate, I guess, as opposed to fee, but.
Yeah, so, but, but both, absolutely. We would have to, depending on the alternatives we look at, they could drive the need for more revenue.
Yeah.
And if we do, we're going to have to talk to the community about that. Unless you'd rather us not, you want to just pass it blindly here, then we don't have to.
And that's not where I was going.
Okay.
If I go back to the February discussion and a subsequent follow-up with you, and I just want to make certain I have held my understanding correctly, that, that we're constrained by state statute, is there a state preemption on what we can or cannot do with replacing commercial vendors for businesses and multifamily dwellings? Is it units? Is that correct?
That is correct. We can only serve, we can only compel single-family and multifamily up to eight to receive a municipal service.
So when, when there's, and I'm not certain I was interpreting, I'm interpreting what I've, what I heard earlier tonight or in any other conversation, to expand, whether it's universal recycling or to expand to more multifamily units. Does that butt up against what that state preemption is?
It generally does not. What happens is that the private sector provides that service. Most of them already provide all those services.
So we don't have to provide it?
We don't have to, no.
Would we regulate that? Would we buy ordinance? You would direct that?
You, so by ordinance, you can do, depending once again on the alternatives you look at, you could require haulers to provide that service within Longmont that don't do it currently.
Okay. And is that, would we go through a bidding process for that? You'd award a contract for that?
That would generally be, if, if that was the approach taken, that would generally be in an ordinance that would require them to do that. So in other words, private haulers would have certain requirements if they work in Longmont. And one requirement would be that any commercial entity they serve, for example, they would have to make available composting and recycle, if that's what an ordinance said.
And enforcement of that would be, if you don't and, and there's a complaint or enough complaints, then you lose your license to, to conduct that business in Longmont. Is that basically where it goes?
So that's a question I can't answer yet because I, my research hasn't gone that far. But I would assume probably what you are is that, yes, you could enforce that and restrict that contractor from working in Longmont. And let me say, all of this will need substantial legal review. So I want to be really careful I'm not talking out of school here because it is what we can do. What I know about it right now comes from a cursory review of other ordinances, primarily Boulders, and how they've structured it.
Listen, you don't have to go to law school. Just respond to every question with "it depends." You're good.
Thank you.
And do more research after that thing.
All right, let's go with, Councilmember Martin, we haven't heard from you. Let's go with you.
It's a strange thing, isn't it? So you had a number early on that, you know, Longmont diverts this percentage of its waste away from the landfill, and a larger percentage is possible, right? You know, lots of stuff goes to the landfill that could become compost or could be recycled. Compost, especially in a landfill or compostables in a landfill, produces greenhouse gases. Do you have, or does Annie have, any kind of an estimate of what that contribution to Longmont's carbon footprint is? You know, leaving aside the cost in dollars, but just the cost in the carbon footprint of the stuff that we don't divert? Annie's nodding.
So we do have those numbers. I don't have them off the top of my head, but we could get back to you.
That would be wonderful. I, you know, I, I think we could, we should be, when we think about this, we should be imposing our own little carbon tax here, and that should impact our thinking.
And I would say anecdotally, four times that slide I showed earlier is the footprint. If you assume current conditions, if you do more education and you get more people diverting more and you move that to the commercial sector, then that grows.
I think I understood that. But when it comes back, we'll understand it better.
And we'll make sure that we bring more of that information. I think that we're going to have to get into that conversation more as we look at alternatives because that's, those will be the metrics that will tell you whether or not there's much value added for alternative A over alternative B or C, whatever we come up with.
Yeah, the world's getting to be scary, you know? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Christensen.
Ah, okay. So, thank you. This is a good report, and I'm really happy to see that you are working on the universal recycling ordinance because, you know, that will help us enormously. I know that there's a lot of frustration that we haven't gotten everything purified and simplified and fixed, but, you know, it really does take time. So I think the only people here, when I brought the composting. So I think the only people here, when I brought the composting ordinance forward, were Mayor Bagley and I, but I, I'm trying to remember, it seems to me that when we were talking about the, about that, the consultant said about, we were discussing whether to make it opt-in or opt-out. And I believe what she, I wanted it to be opt-out, because I thought we'd get a greater take rate. But she said that there, you might get a greater take rate at first, and then people would just drop out. So, and that's not a good way to start things. In addition to which, we didn't have the equipment, we didn't have it set up, we didn't want to start saying, we're going to do composting for the whole city and then not be able to come through. So I, I hope that people in the audience understand that we were trying to do it in a way that would guarantee success. We have gotten to almost the rate that she suggested, you know, 25% would be as much as we can get. I do think that at this point, it might be good to examine whether we want to do an opt-out, because I do think that all of us are adverse to change. It took me years to even understand that I could change from a 95-gallon trash can to a 45 with no effort at all, but I was really quite afraid of having trash pile up in my house. Anyway, I, once you, and then there were all these people who also, there were a lot of people who objected to composting. They thought it was going, we're going to force them to do this, and there'd be rats running around the town, and there were people who objected to recycling too. So people are naturally adverse to change, but I do think that it might be time to think about the opt-out. And I want to thank you also for bringing forth the hard-to-recycle. I think that's a really good idea. Not only do I have a lot of stuff in my house, but I, it would save everybody having to drag things themselves down to the landfill, which is really not that much fun, and, and it's a waste of gas, and it would be just much more efficient to do it this way, even though it will cost the town. I would suggest maybe we could ask for a $5 or $10 donation. That might help offset the price. And anybody who's objecting to a $5 donation, well, I don't know. So anyway, thank you for bringing this forth. I think it's pretty good news. I think we have an excellent system of, of all of our integrated utilities is wonderful for this town. This is the first town I've ever lived in with that, and it's, it's cheaper, it's more efficient, it's just better all in all, and we're very lucky that we have that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. So Bob, thank you. This is, this is good presentation, but I do have three suggestions. First of all, I agree with the opt-out. I think it's now time to tell people we have to do this. But in doing that, we probably should also look at the different size containers for compost, because those large containers, it takes me two or three months in the winter to fill that thing up, and it's not needed. But in the summer, I do need it. So that, as well as what Councilman Waters said I agreed with about getting commercial, and I'm assuming that multifamily or apartment buildings might be considered commercial, as well as schools. When you do your research, I, I would be curious as to, do we need to purchase new trucks for those huge containers like Western Disposal uses? Or do we have another system that would take that over if the vendor decided they were not going to do business in Longmont anymore? If we decided they had to compost? Because that cost analysis might make a huge difference on, on whether we do that or not. Shoot, there was one more thing. I don't know what it is. But, was that three things? Because I have three things.
If the mayor will let me respond to one of your comments, then maybe you'll think of it.
Okay.
Go, go, I, I hereby say you can, Mr. Allen.
So I, I mean, you, you raised the dilemma I'd never thought about, and that is that the city can't compel the use of its service, but a private sector doesn't provide it. So I don't know how that works for us. I guess we could tool up to provide that. I think that we would be likely to have the private sector willing to step in.
Hopefully.
Yes.
So I let you, I let you talk, and your answer is, it depends, you don't know.
The, and then the opt-out, so communities that do tend to, I mean, the ship of opting out has kind of sailed already because we launched the program, but I think that's another way of saying the fee is embedded into the entire waste services subscription. And that's how most communities that provide that. Whether you receive the service or not, that's generally how that works. And certainly, when we start talking about rates next, would be a really good time to have that conversation about what you want to do. And we'll, we'll bring that sooner if that's what you would like. You'd have to direct us to do that. But when we get to that point here in a year to, I think, 18 months, that would be a good time to have that conversation.
I did think of it. You're right. On the hard-to-recycle, if we had a hard-to-recycle program in Longmont, we would have to, as you said, truck that over to the, to Boulder, those hard-to-recycle items. Was I correct in hearing that?
That's, it, that, it depends.
Okay.
I'll declare victory. So for what we're proposing now, the interim program, yes. A, a longer-term program that might have facilities locally could go in a different direction. But I, I would envision we'd still want to partner with EcoCycle still, because they're really, that's what they're good at, right?
That's what they do.
Yes.
Yeah. So the reason I asked was, when I've taken a hard-to-recycle, it's $25 a load. So we have, I, I would assume you would have to work the costs of trucking that over, and would they, would EcoCycle then charge the city per the load that they bring? I mean, and these are just things to think about, because the resident should pick up that cost. Instead of, you know, I, I love the idea of $5, but that isn't going to, that's not going to cover it. So just keep that in mind.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Idalgalferin.
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to go back to look at the Green, Green Star, so that collaboration, I think that is, that's great. I was wondering the impacts, though, of COVID, the Delta variant. Last year, so I, I work at a Green Star school, and last year, we did not do composting. We were instructed that to not, to not have that. So all that was getting disposed of in the trash can. So, you know, as we're, as we are wanting to expand the program and work with the school district on, on this, you know, I'd like to know if, you know, are we going to be having composting next year?
Mayor Bagley, Mayor Bagley and Councilmember Idalgalferin, that's a great question. And when we are doing our Green Star School program, we do work with EcoCycle and also partner with the St. Ring Valley School District. And at some level, the school district has a say to help protect their employees and such. And the Delta variant or COVID is still going to be a little bit of a challenge as we proceed forward, and that's a great conversation that we'll have with EcoCycle and the school district's sustainability person who joins onboard. And I realize it's important to make sure that if we are having a program that we're paying for, that it should be done. But I think safety is around that, but I think the overarching goal is to go ahead and make sure that that program is put in place and that it is used properly. I hope that answered your question well enough.
Yeah, it does. So.
It's more of a safety issue, I think.
Yeah, and it seemed like it was coming as the direction from the school district, that they did not want to do the composting component because of, because of the safety issues. So along with that, there is that educational piece, and, you know, I wanted to, to also have this, you know, in your, in your heads as well, that, you know, our students, you know, they're like sponges. They pick up that information, they're sitting in the trainings when the presenter comes in and says, you know, what you can recycle, what you can't, what, and they, they take that home. So, you know, during the years that we've been a Green Star school, I've had a handful of kids who've told, came back and told me that they are now doing composting at home. So it's, you know, it's really, you know, the influence that they, they have in the family. But also too, like I think about a lot of our families, I, I teach in a Title I school, so I have predominantly immigrant families, Spanish-speaking families, and so that access to information, it's, it, it can be limited at times, and it is, it's pretty frustrating for some of our families. So, you know, having that culturally relevant piece where we are able to, to communicate, you know, culturally relevant information to our community. So, so to have, have that component in, in mind as well. And, and that understanding, that educational piece, you know, you got to rinse out your, your recyclables before you're throwing them in the, in the recycling bin. And, you know, when you mix, you know, you put in plastic in the composting bin, that, you know, that ruins the whole batch. So you have to, you know, of course, there's times I'm, I'm going in the trash in front of, it doesn't go there. So I'm literally dumpster diving in the three bins to put things back where they belong. So, so have, making sure that, that, that educational component is there, I think that's something that I, I highly regard. And I really like that we are collaborating with the district and EcoCycle on the Green Star schools as well. And, and I am, you know, if you're collecting our input on the hard-to-recycle event, I am in support of having, of continuing that event and seeing what we can do to, to make it happen. So, thanks.
And hopefully, some of your former students will actually pursue careers in composting and recycling industries.
I, I think my OCD is kind of where, because they are very, like, they're all into that. No, it doesn't go there, and they're educating the, the younger ones.
Just, I should have asked when I had my time, so I apologize for coming back in. Has there been any more discussion about a regional composting facility or strategy or plan that includes not just the county, but the municipalities in the county?
I appreciate you asking, because I meant to bring that up and forgot.
Well, we both did.
Yes. The, the county is, is in the lead role in that right now. As you recall, you wrote a letter and asked that we be able to participate, so they have definitely brought us into the process. Their focus, up until really about a month ago, has been on recruiting a position within the county to take the lead on that, and they actually had to get approval from their commissioners to do that.
Recruiting a?
A, a, I don't know the title of the position.
Filling a job, a position with, got it.
Yes, yeah, and that would be their focal point. I don't, I think they're actively recruiting the position. I don't think that they have hired yet. So that's kind of where their mind has been wrapped, and then they're hoping that when that is done, that we kind of hit the ground again, looking at the options and alternatives. We have been forthcoming with what we think we could offer contingent on studies and reports and revenue evaluations and all, but I think it's been a good partnership so far.
Thanks.
All right, complete and utter garbage. So thank you very much for that update, and we appreciate it. All right, let's go ahead and take a, I don't know, let's take a five-minute break and come back and attack our air quality and oil and gas update.
That's pretty important to Longmont. And again, we're being represented by C C four C A who's participating in this process. I'm also working with local government groups and C O G C C to make sure that Longmont's interests are expressed and heard. Lastly, this isn't a regulation, but I just wanted to highlight that C D P H E is really stepping up in the monitoring game. They have a new aerial oil and gas survey. They've got airplanes that started flying around last month. They've been looking at methane. They're going to be expanding to other air pollutants. So they're flying over Boulder, Weld and Laramie counties to try to get a better understanding of the real world impacts of oil and gas. And when I spoke with staff at C D P H E, they've expressed to me that the air quality studies sponsored by Longmont, Boulder, Broomfield, done by Dr. Helmig here, have been some of the motivation that's made them really have to take a second look at their models, the data that they've been using to base regulation along on. And so they're really stepping up and using some sophisticated means to monitor. So there'll be the airplanes, they're going to use satellite imagery and really expanding how they take a look at this. Moving to more local issues, Longmont Oil and Gas, as many of you know, there was just two active oil and gas wells remaining in Longmont, and those are now plugged. So we've closed the last two wells in Longmont. The stamp well located on the northwest corner of Union Reservoir was plugged in early July. The Tabor number seven well located on the south side of town near the Innovation Center was plugged in late June. And there is still a little bit of work going on out there. The operators are, the wells are plugged, but the operators are working to remove the last of the infrastructure, tanks, pipes. Any historical contamination that they encounter during that process will be remediated. And all that work is being overseen by C O G C C. But if there is remediation needed, the city will have TerraCon there to provide third-party oversight. So I just want to take a minute to recognize all the folks over the last decade that have worked really hard to make this goal a reality. City Council, present and past, staff, as well as residents and activists have all played a role in making this happen. And it's a pretty big and unique achievement here on the Front Range. All right, so looking just outside of town to the north, the night wells, this is a well pad that's located just outside of town to the north of town. And you may recall that 12 wells were drilled, as we heard during Public Invited. That drilling occurred from February to June. During July, the well pad, there was nothing going on at the wells. They were just preparing for this next phase that they've just now started. That's the hydraulic fracturing, often known as fracking. And that just started over the weekend. They're expecting eight to 10 weeks of work for this. So as we heard, it can be quite a disruptive process, especially for those that are very near the well site. City's very concerned about it. I have had reports from staff who have been in the area, including rangers at Union Reservoir, and they're indicating that they cannot hear what's going on there. So as disruptive as the process is, it does seem that the sound's attenuating quite quickly as you move away from the well. So at this time, we're not expecting that folks recreating at Union Reservoir will be hearing those impacts. Of course, we're also concerned about potential environmental impacts. So you've seen this slide before. We have a lot of oil and gas monitoring near the night wells, and I'll just run through this quickly. Adjacent to the night well pad, a neighbor has been kind enough to volunteer to allow us to drill a groundwater monitoring well and also place some air quality monitor sensors there. C D P H E has also indicated that they will have some more sophisticated sensors there during this fracking process. Along the north shore of Union Reservoir, you see those three teardrops. Those are representing three groundwater monitoring wells. Those act like a sentinel so that we can see if something's in the groundwater moving towards Union Reservoir. We test those each month. In Union Reservoir itself, we do surface water sampling during the summer months, and we've been doing that since 2019. And of course, you know that we have our research-grade air quality monitoring station located on the southwest side of Union Reservoir. And Dr. Helmig will tell us more about what he's seeing out there. Regarding results at these monitoring locations, adjacent to the well pad, the groundwater monitoring, we have not detected pollutants there. We have not detected pollutants on the north side of Union Reservoir. And as far as the Union Reservoir's surface water sampling, for this year, we just have one sample so far. That's for June. That sample came back clean, and we're awaiting results for the July sample, which was just collected last month. If we see anything in that sample, of course, I will let you know immediately. And the last topic I wanted to hit upon is the air quality station on the west side of town. It's currently located at the airport. As you know, we're going to be relocating that station. There's a new hangar that's expected to potentially impact the data, in particular, the wind data, which is an important part of the study. That new hangar is expected, construction start date is in October. And I'm showing in this photo here, the air quality station components. So you see that it's a 30-foot steel tower, which we attach instruments to, and a small trailer, which houses computers and some of the instrumentation. So this is the station, and we're looking to find a new home for that. And we've looked at a number of sites so far. At this point, we're focused on what looks to be the best candidate to us. In this image on the left side, you'll see obviously the airport with a yellow flag noting the current location of the air quality station. And if you jump just to the right side of the image, on the other side of Airport Road, off Lykan Sculch Greenway, you'll see the area that we are contemplating right now. It is owned by the city. It's a relatively flat area. We like about this location that it's so close to the current location. We believe that that will be helpful in being able to compare data collected at the current site versus the new site. We also see it as potentially an education and outreach site. We could put some signage up there. People on the greenway could see the monitoring station and maybe get a little more interested in the program. Now, in this photo, I'm showing kind of zoom in of looking south from the bike path on Lykan Sculch there. This is just to give you an idea of what that area looks like. There are some homes, but it is relatively flat. It's probably hard to see there along the fence line, but there are also power poles. For reference, those power poles are actually taller than the monitoring tower. So we're hoping that that tower wouldn't cause too much of an issue. One potential downside of this site is that it is quite open and accessible to the public. And so it would require that, we would need to add in probably fencing just to make sure that those sophisticated instruments that we house there don't get tampered with. So that would be an additional cost that we need to bear if we did select this site. But I wanted to keep you all in the loop at what we're looking at. There's still a number of boxes that would need to be checked if we select this site, but I did want to share that with you. And I think that's all I have, unless Council has questions, we can turn it over to Dr. Helmig.
Councilor Beck.
Thank you. Jane, thank you very much for this update. And I especially wanted to thank you for the email that you sent to Council with the update on the night well. And in that email, you had a web address for complaints and for anyone to complain. I would like that address, however you can get it out to the public, so that residents can actually use that as well.
Yes.
And is our city complaining to COGA or C D P H E when we have spikes in the monitoring system that we're using with Dr. Helmig?
Mayor and Council, just to first comment on the making those complaint forms available. We have added quite large on the city's website, if you search for oil and gas, any residents that believe that they've observed some operational issues that they would like to report on, whether it's, you know, smoke or sound, those sorts of complaints get filed with the C O G C C. Again, there's a link, and I'll definitely brainstorm some ways to get those links out to other places.
Okay.
If residents have health concerns that they believe are oil and gas related, that's a separate complaint form, and there's a separate link for that. That goes to C D P H E as the Health Department. And I think C D P H E is quite attentive. When people submit these complaints, they follow up, they ask a lot of questions, and that's really important for the state to understand where clusters of symptoms are being heard. I have heard a couple of people with complaints or health concerns. I can't say I've heard a ton of that, but I would encourage people to check out the website, use those forms, or reach out to me and share what you're experiencing. As we heard, can be very disruptive, close to the site, and people may be experiencing other impacts that if they're not filed with the state or if they're not reported to me, we just simply don't know exactly what people are experiencing. The second point is regarding the data spikes that we experienced earlier this year or last year. I haven't personally used the complaint forms just because I have contacts and colleagues that I usually reach out to directly. So whether it's the compliance manager at C O G C C or someone at C D P H E that I know, kind of going straight to the source, I typically share my data that way.
Okay, I was just curious, because the city of Broomfield has given direction to their staff to file complaints. And I think the, you know, the number of people, the number of cities, the number of staffs that do this makes a huge difference, especially when they're doing rulemaking. So I'm curious as to how they are complaining. Are they going to, would you mind reaching out to Broomfield to see if they are using the complaint status or the complaint website, just out of curiosity?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I'm happy to do that. I do connect with other communities, including Broomfield regularly.
Okay.
And if we feel like adding that so it's sort of, you know, on file that we have made a complaint, be happy to do that.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll turn it over to Dr. Detlev Helmig of Boulder Air.
Yes, good evening, everybody. It's good to be back in person. Are you helping me loading this presentation? Am I doing this myself here? That's actually, no, that's, that's, no, this is, no, this is not the right one. That's one, yeah. Okay, so. There we go. Okay, so it's been four months, last time I presented to you, so I have updates mostly covering those past four months then. So let me see, go here, yep. This is what I showed last time, just to remind you what the highlights were we covered back then. And I want to pick up on two of those again. One was, it was a really big, big event. We had these gas plumes we observed early in the year. So I'm going to show you how that looks now, four months later. And then we had that very unusual photochemical smog event in March. I'm going to touch on that again a little bit as well. So this is the presentation today. Real quick, going to introduce another network site that's coming on board right now. Update on these plumes we saw last times. Then, big chunk will be the summer 21 air quality we've been observing here. And then something really interesting, that's new, it's kind of exciting, and it's been fun to work on that, is on CO2 occurrences at Longmont Municipal Airport Station. And then a quick outlook, what's coming up during quarter three. Again, I showed that last time, I just added a few updates, and you probably remember by now, we have those two different stations, one at the airport, the other one at Union Reservoir. And we're approaching two years, operational time for the one at the airport. Everything has been running very nicely, pecking along. Data are coming in, the website has become quite popular. It received another 1,600-something visits just in quarter two. We made one improvement, so now it's much easier to view the different pages on your mobile phone. That was quite a big job for us to make those adjustments. And then we also implemented, it was a request by Union Reservoir Park Staff, we implemented wind alerts. They wanted to know, we want to know when the winds get crazy so we can pull people off the reservoir. So you can see, this is actually from, when was that? Just today, yeah, the third. You can see, it says at 11:50, the winds exceeded, I think the threshold is five, no, 12 miles per hour. And you can see, the email was sent at 11:55, and the winds were high at 11:50. So within five minutes, these wind alerts go out to park staff. So they, you know, even if they're out for lunch or somewhere else, they get a notification right away when the winds become unpleasant on the reservoir. Then this is the news about the overall network. You see, you know, the two Longmont sites have some companion sites in the region. Two are in Broomfield, and the one that used to be Broomfield Livingston has been moved over about a couple miles to the east, and it's now Broomfield, not North Picos. So that's because there's some oil and gas activity in that area, and Broomfield asked us to move that site to be closer to those fracking sites. And then another news is that we're going to have another site added to this network, and we're working on it right now, and that's going to be in the town of Erie. They decided to go forward with another station that will monitor methane, VOCs, PM, also ozone. So that would be nice, gives us another piece in the puzzle to better understand the air quality and where pollution originates. So that's what I showed last time again. This is ethane, and it shows the concentrations against time. There's about a year of data on this graph. Ethane, we believe is our favorite compound to use as an indicator of oil and gas emissions because it's so specific, so selective, indicating oil and gas plumes. And, you know, way back in the early stages, you know, we had these many, many spikes, many plumes of oil and gas making it across the Union Reservoir. But then that become much, much quieter soon after we presented these data. And then earlier this year, in 2021, we had these two crazy spikes there where concentrations peaked, and we estimated 3,000, 4,000, 5,000 times above the background. And so I want to show you now how it's been since then. So this was what I showed last time, and now I'm adding to the same graph, the data from the last three months. Now it's running all the way to yesterday, actually. And you can see those two big spikes there in January and February 2021. So it's been calmer, it's been quieter. You see a little bit, that winter maximum that we always see, that's mostly different by meteorology, but it has calmed down, and those two events, you know, where, I would call them exceptional, we haven't seen anything that extreme since earlier this year. Okay, similar for benzene. You know, there's several people here who are watching benzene very closely. So this is now the full record. There's some, oh, 10, 15,000 measurements of air in there, each relook for benzene. So you can see in the winter, we had some spikes there where benzene went ways above the background, but the last couple, three months, it's been more calm. And I put in there on the right side, these World Health Organization's thresholds or risk thresholds that show you roughly, you know, what the risk levels are that correspond to certain levels of benzene. And bear in mind, those are the mean, annual mean levels that these relate to. So, you know, we are probably here, if you take the yearly average, and actually, I think I have that in the next slide, yeah, yeah, yeah. So this is now, these are monthly data averaged in these, we call these box whisker plots. So each of these colored boxes give you the whole spread of the data, where the round dot is the mean of the data, and the horizontal line in the box is the median of the data. So that's really what shows you, you know, what's across the month, the mean and the median. And you can see for Union Reservoir, that's the pinkish on the right, we've been between point 0.6, point 0.9 on the mean and the median for the benzene, you know, which, you know, is somewhat higher than these other sites. The two green ones are the Broomfield sites, the blue one is the Boulder Reservoir. But actually, in June, I think it's for the first time, Union Reservoir was actually lower than what we observed at the Boulder Reservoir. Okay, so next topic is ozone, and, you know, when it comes to health impacts, I would call ozone and small particles the two most concerning pollutants we're dealing with here in this environment. And this is the full record of ozone for the Union Reservoir and the Longmont Airport. You can see, it goes up in the summer, it comes down in the winter, and then goes back up again. Last year, we had one occurrence where ozone peaked over 100 parts per billion. This year, you know, we've actually been higher overall in ozone, and that becomes more clear in the next slide. So again, you know, ozone is a very strong respiratory irritant, and, you know, at the levels we're observing here, it does impact a pretty significant fraction of the population. So what I showed you first, in this first slide, were the very, you know, high-resolution minute ozone data for the regulatory consideration what's used here, is the eight-hour average. So you take the data and you average over eight hours, and then you do this over and over every hour, and you slide that mean across the time scale. So this is now a year and a half of this regulatory ozone standard. And we had a pretty bad ozone year last year. Remember, we had high ozone events in June, July, and then in August, September, and all the way through October. We got impacted by wildfire smoke that added somewhat to these high ozone conditions. So altogether, last year, we had 17 exceedance days, and the EPA defines non-attainment with the ozone standard when you have on average more than four days or more of these exceedance dates. So we were four times that high last year in 2020. And now in 2021, you can see how, you know, and this is as of today, this graph was just done today, we've already had 32 exceedance days thus, this far for the year 2021. There were 20 just during the past month, and you can see all, you know, how now this spring, this March photochemical smog event in there. Let me see, is this, I don't think this, it shows here, I don't think it shows. So early on there in March 2021, that was that very unusual spring photochemical smog event, and it added two days. So we had 32, and we're not anywhere close to being done. So last year, we had most of our high ozone days in August, so there are likely going to be another 10, 15, 20 days. We'll see how it goes. So this is going to be a huge, huge ozone year, but very, very unfortunately. This compares by month, the ozone we've observed this year in 2021, with the ozone we observed last year. Again, those are the box whisker plots, and the dots in there, the circles are the mean values, the horizontal are the median values. And then the percentage values on top give the difference in the median comparing last year to this year. So you can see, you know, the March, we were high with this crazy photochemical smog. We were 22% higher in ozone than the year before, but now June and July, again, we are higher in ozone, June 5% medians, and in July, we were almost 20% higher in ozone than what we had last year. Okay, so the second pollutant that we worry about from a health perspective is our fine particulate matter. Those are only measured at the Union Reservoir side. Again, let's go deep into your lungs, and they can also carry carcinogens and very unhealthy to inhale these fine particles. And we had a lot of, a fair number of exceedances. I think we had 15, 16 days last year when we were subjected to these wildfire plumes. And then this year, we had that photochemical smog event in March that, where we exceeded the standard, again, the dotted line there, so that stands for National Ambient Air Quality Standard. So we exceeded that clearly in March. And for the summer, we just exceeded it yesterday for the first time. But other than that, even though you've noticed, you know, the haziness and the poor visibility from the measurement perspective, the particulate levels we've seen so far this year have not been quite as bad or severe as what we had last summer. Okay, and this is where most of this is coming from right now, unfortunately. And again, this is, I pulled this this morning, on the left picture there, it's, that's a NOAA-generated image. It shows the fire intensity. So the brighter, the brighter the spot, the larger, the hotter the fire. And then the larger image that shows you where the smoke is being transported from the fires, it shows you the density of the smoke plumes and the particles. And I've watched this, you know, a few times over the last week or two, and it's a very typical transport pattern. You have these fires on the west coast, and in Oregon, in Idaho, and they kind of circle around, make it around the Rockies, and then drop down from the north, and we get this transport then here into the Front Range. So that's a major contribution to this particulate air pollution we've been observing. This compares similar to what we just looked at for ozone, the levels in fine particulate matter between last year and this year. And you can see that for the month as a whole, May, June, and July, particles were at higher levels all throughout. The mean was higher, the median was higher, the whole distribution was higher, the high percentile values were higher, very significantly, 83%, 55% in July, you know, and that's done with a $30,000 instrument, but if you just look towards the mountains, you kind of see the mountains. How many days have you seen the mountains? You know, and that's what's driving this, this poor visibility. For benzene, benzene is also somewhat enhanced in these fire plumes. So you can see that May, June, and July, the summer, benzene levels were higher than last year, you know, somewhat significantly because these smoke plumes do carry a certain amount of benzene with them. Okay, so now I'm going to turn to a different topic, and I haven't touched this much here in previous presentations. So part of the motivation of this, the study we're doing here is to better understand the greenhouse gas emissions from the city and provide observations to evaluate the city's path towards curbing its greenhouse gas emissions. And, you know, CO2 is, that's the big, big one, that's the most significant greenhouse gas we're concerned about. So we're monitoring this at both locations, at the airport and Union Reservoir. And then what we can do with the data is produce these, you know, we call them heat maps. So let me explain again what you're seeing here. Let's start on the right one. We're plotting the data we're seeing over a certain time window, and here, this is quarter two, so this is three months of data, measured every minute. So we're plotting the concentrations against the wind direction and the wind speed. So wind direction is north, south, east, you know, it's just like a compass. And then from the center to the outside, you have increasing wind speeds. So most of the time, you actually have pretty calm winds. So most of the data are really in the center of this, and on the outskirts, it's just a few, you know, crazy high wind occurrences. So you have much more, much more data, what happens much more often is what you see in the center of these plots. So what you see on the right side is very clearly that the hot colors, the red colors, are on the left of the center, which means when the winds are from the west, and mostly at lighter winds, so this is in meters per second, you know, between like zero or three, zero to three meters per second, that when you get the highest CO2 at Union Reservoir, which means, looking at a map, Union Reservoir to the west, that's where the city is. Pretty much what I would have expected. You have 100,000 people living there, so let's look at that. So we are, you see the star there on the right, that's where Union Reservoir is that we're measuring, and you have the city. And you have the city straight to the west. So when the air comes from the west, that's when you get high CO2. So that's what we wanted to measure. We wanted to measure, you know, the CO2 that's coming from the city. Works very nicely, makes complete sense. And, you know, as we, you know, we move now towards bringing CO2 emissions down. If we do this year after year after year, and if we really completely succeed, this should all disappear. It should be gone eventually. So then we do the same for the airport. And that's the other star there on the left, LMA, Longmont Municipal Airport. And so what I would have expected now is that that hot color should be on the right side. Because we have a hundred thousand people on the east side, northeast. So that's where all this CO2 should be coming from, really. Because to the west of the airport, there really isn't a whole lot. You know, there's a little bit of lions, and then there's the mountains and Estes Park. There shouldn't be a whole lot of CO2. But let me see if I go back. That shows a little bit, a little bit larger. So what we've been seeing when we've done this analysis for the airport, something very similar to what we see at Union Reservoir. We see much more CO2 coming from the west than from the city. And we've been looking at this now for nine months. And we're thinking, we're doing something wrong, we're doing something wrong. That's, you know, the wind wave isn't lined right. And we've been checking and checking and scratching our heads, and we see the same thing over and over. So why is there this much CO2 at the airport? There's another sign for this, and we've been watching this now more and more. This shows three days of CO2 data from just a month ago. And this compares the airport data in red with the Union Reservoir. This is this purple, and Broomfield Soaring Eagle, which is green. So what happens with CO2? It goes down during the day for two reasons. The atmosphere mixes much, much more during the day. And you mix cleaner air from above with what's near the ground. The air really bumps down, just like a basketball. It mixes really well, and that dilutes it. And then in the summer, you have all these plants out there, the vegetation, that take out CO2. You have the photosynthesis, so it's a real sink. And you can see that during the day, these are the lows, the three sides, they are almost identical, very nice, consistent. So that shows you, you know, we're measuring the right thing, the sensors agree very nicely. But then at night, this mixing becomes much weaker, and you have these inversions. And then you see really what's happening in the vicinity. Because the emissions, they kind of, they accumulate, like it's all trapped under a blanket. And what really puzzles me is why the airport and even Union Reservoir are higher than Broomfield? Because Broomfield is much closer to Denver. Big city, lots of traffic, power plants, there's a power plant down there. Lots of heavy CO2 emissions. But Longmont peaks at higher levels during the night, day after day. Seen this, most days we see it like that. So why would we, here in Longmont, have more stronger CO2 sources than what we see at Broomfield? And you see that here as well. So this is the statistics of the data. Again, the green one is the Broomfield data. So you can see the spread is higher at the Longmont sites, the mean is higher, the medians are higher. The boxes give from the twenty-five to seventy-five percentile. It's higher here in Longmont. So we have more CO2, we have stronger CO2 sources here in Longmont than what we have in Broomfield. And this is another interesting comparison. So now we're getting into the second year, so we can do year-to-year comparison. So this compares for the Longmont Airport, the CO2 distribution in quarter two. So this is three months of data, many, many, many measurements, between 2020 and 2021. And it went up. The mean went up by four parts per million, the mean by three point three. Which is not that surprising, because if you watch the news or read the papers, you know, CO2 is going up and up and up and up. But globally, it's gone up by two point one parts per million. From the NOAA network, this is very well defined. The global CO2 increase between 2020 and 2021 was two point one parts per million. Here at the airport, we see more than that. You know, we want to go towards bringing CO2 down. But at least this shows, well, we are actually heading the opposite direction according to this data. So we have some, 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 some strong CO2 issues here. So we've looked at this more. And this now takes these wind rose, heat map analysis a little bit further. This shows now the airport CO2. Got to do a little bit of filtering of the data. And so what the tease out there now is that, you know, as I said earlier, we have this flow, this high CO2 to the west of the airport, whatever it may be. But then there's also in the northwest corner, and very interestingly, at higher wind speeds. You see the yellow colors there in that corner. At higher wind speeds, we get higher CO2 from that northwest corner. So, you know, we're very surprised, and we stumbled, actually, over a second set of data. So the red asterix there, that's where the Longmont Airport's monitoring site is. And it just happens that just half a mile to the west, there's another place where CO2 is monitored, being monitored. And this is a NEON site that stands for the National Ecological Observing Network. And it's a testing site, it's an instrument testing site. But they also have a really high accuracy CO2 monitor there. And we were able to get the data and analyze the data, and that's now on the left side there. So we use, you know, we use data from a different instrument that's operated by a different group. We had nothing to do with it, but we then processed the data, and that's what we get on the left side. And it looks very, very similar. We get this, you know, the high CO2 plumes that come from the northwest. So we know, you know, this is not something we did wrong with our measurements or whatsoever. There's, you know, a major CO2 source, and that's not the city. I mean, you can see a little bit on the east, there's, you know, it's higher than on the southwest. So the city contributes somewhat. But the biggest contributor here, the biggest contribution is not, is not from the city. So then if you look, you know, what are the roughly the sectors? If you put these, the wind direction on a map, you know, that's where the airport is. And the yellow sector there, that's where we get these, these, these strong enhancement. And then the more darker yellow oranges, this is where we get these, these other, the other signal. So then what's, what's right within that sector, and which I think points towards the source of the CO2, is the, there's that cement plant, Semex. And, you know, cement plants are a very significant source of CO2. So we actually did a little bit of digging, and we got their greenhouse gas summary report. And that reports for, I think this is 2020, yeah, 2020. If I understand this report right. CO2 equivalent emissions from the facility is three hundred fifty-seven thousand metric tons in CO2. Three hundred fifty-seven thousand. I'd never seen this before, so I was really intrigued. I said, how much is this? So I was then, I was doing some math. So the three hundred fifty-seven thousand metric tons of year, and I was just guessing here. And please redo this math and tell me if I'm wrong. So guessing, you know, if Longmont has a hundred thousand people, and there's, you know, sixty thousand cars, and everybody puts in forty gallons of gas every month, and you burn this all to CO2, how much CO2 do you get from all these cars in Longmont? And I got two hundred thirteen thousand metric tons per year from all the cars. So that math is correct, which I hope it is. You know, that, that plant by itself emits more CO2 than all of the cars in Longmont per year. You know, so that makes sense, that makes sense. So this is, this is a stronger CO2 emitter than all the cars in Longmont. And we see this nicely in the data. You know, that's, that's what we see, you know, without having ever thought about it, just analyzing our CO2 data. There's a strong CO2 source, you know, to the northwest of the station. So I think that's an explanation for this, you know, this increase we saw up there. But we still have one other question that isn't answered, and that's a question mark. So what's this other signal we're seeing from the west here? Why do we see, you know, this higher CO2 on the west? And our first suspicion was, I thought I had a really good explanation. So we are, we are there where the star is. And then if you could just look a little bit to the left, there are these hangars, these, these light aircraft hangars. And there's eight of them there. And I did some research, I told, we called the managers, and it turns out they heat them. They have actually natural gas heaters there so that the planes are not getting too cold, I guess. So I thought, well, probably what we're seeing here is when they're heating these, firing up the hangars in the winter, and we're getting the CO2 from the natural gas furnaces. But then we did the seasonal analysis and said, we see the same thing in summer we see in the winter. Why are they heating these hangars in the summer? It's so, it must be really hot in there. So that, that didn't make much sense. But then we got that NEON data, and that's to the west of all these hangars. And that showed the same CO2 source that it's from on the west. So if the hangars were that source, it should come from the right side, from the east, but it didn't. And another thing then that was stunning to me is that this now shows the CO2 data from our airport side, which is this brownish color, versus the NEON data. And the NEON data you can see at night actually higher. The spikes are higher, which means they have higher CO2. So you go half a mile further to the west, and the nighttime spikes in CO2 are actually higher. Which means that the NEON side, which is on the other side of the hangars in the airport, must be closer to that CO2 source. So where is this from? What's out there that generates all this CO2? And we thought we had it figured out until this morning, actually. And I still had this slide in there. Because we actually drove around, we did Google Maps surveys, and we found this one business that's just a half a mile west, and it had this big tank there in the back parking lot. And we thought it was a CO2 tank. But now we've found out this morning, it's nitrogen supposedly. So that, that's not the, the explanation. So we're still not sure. What, where is the CO2? And if any of you, you know, have an idea, suspicion, what's west of the airport that releases a lot of CO2?
Don't you live there, Eugene?
And this, this is, this is significant, you know, this is a fair amount of CO2. So that's, that's the end of that, what I have to share about all this data analysis and this detective work we've been doing. Outlook for what's down the road. You know, we are still in the middle of a high pollution event episode here, so we certainly keep our eyes on that. The Fed Nightwell becoming more and more active right now. We're watching that very, very closely. So far, nothing has jumped at us from the ongoing activities there. Still in the middle of the ozone season. We already heard that the site, airport site will likely be moved to a new location. And I have very similar slides that you just saw about that already. Also, I wanted to throw out the idea of having an open house at some point. We wanted to do this last year already, but then COVID all threw this upside down. So if there's interest to do a council field trip, and we can give a tour and show you how all these instruments work and look like, we'll be happy to accommodate that as well. And that's my last slide, so, thanks.
All right, thank you, Doc. We appreciate that. Councilmember Peck, did you have any other questions? Or no, did you already ask yours? Okay, cool. No, thank you very much, we appreciate that. Doc, they're coming up now. All right, we're gonna go with council member Peck, you do have a question? Okay, Dr. Waters? Hold on a second, I'll get you on here.
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. Carol, this is really for you more than Dr. Helming. Is there some direction you're hoping for from us based on, on this presentation, all or slices of the data?
No, this is the, this is the updates that you all wanted in terms of the quarterly updates we were required to give, so. So if you have anything.
All right, Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. Dr. Helming, you have on this last slide more fires, question mark. Can you tell us what the depletion of these ozone layers, how does that affect the fires that we're having? Or does it? Or is that something that you just give us data?
Yeah, there may be two questions in there. You know, does the ozone trigger fires, or do the fires drive more ozone?
Exactly.
So actually, both. So we've, we've experienced, in the northern hemisphere, roughly a doubling of ozone over the last hundred fifty years. And there's more ozone everywhere in the northern hemisphere. The southern hemisphere is much cleaner, because the equator is kind of like a big curtain, and air doesn't exchange across the equator nearly as much as it does within the hemisphere. So if you look at the northern hemisphere, it's much more polluted air overall. There's, because ninety percent of the world's population is in the northern hemisphere. Most of the industries on the northern hemisphere. So, you know, a hundred fifty, two hundred years ago, before all this fossil fuel burning really kicked in, we may have had twenty, twenty-five, thirty ppb of ozone. And now we have many areas where close to twice that. So there's more ozone in the northern hemisphere. And it turns out that ozone is a very significant climate forcing gas. We always talk about CO2, and then we worry about methane, because they are the big ones, you know. Methane, CO2 is about sixty percent of the climate forcing. Methane is something like twenty-five. And then the third one is already ozone. This doubling of ozone is actually the third important, most important climate gas. So it's contributing, it's zero point three watts of forcing, which is pretty significant. So that ozone we've added indirectly to the atmosphere is driving, you know, fifteen to twenty percent of the climate change of the warming. So we could knock all this ozone out, the warming wouldn't be quite as bad. And then the climate warming, you know, it's changing weather patterns. It's changing extreme weather events, and it's driving these, these heat waves and the drying of the ecosystems and the fires. So yes, ozone is one of the gases that contribute to climate change and contribute to these, these extreme severe weather events and the burning we see and the smoke in that way. Now, the second part of that is, you know, now with the smoke and the associated other pollutants being transported in this region, we have conditions that promote more aggressive ozone production. You know, the ozone production here, it goes up and down every day, because ozone is so reactive that at night, a lot of this reacts away. And then in the morning, you know, as the sun comes back out, and we get the radiation that we need to rebuild, make more ozone, you know, it goes from twenty, thirty in the morning to a hundred in the afternoon. It triples throughout the day on a sunny day. And that happens without the fires, smoke. We've seen this on many, many days. But from, you know, we're still studying this very intensely. With the presence of the additional pollutants in the smell, we're getting a somewhat stronger production of this ozone throughout the day. It's not a clear-cut correlation, you know, it's more on some days than on other days. And then also what the smoke can do, it can block some of the radiation. So you have less energy to produce all this ozone. So, you know, there's actually a somewhat beneficial effect of that smoke, because it blocks the sun, so you don't produce as much ozone. So there's components to both of this.
Okay, thanks. That was, that was an interesting answer. My other question is, because of the cement plant, do you report that to CDPHE? My other question is, uh, because of the cement plant, do you report that to CDPHE? That, that's, that you found that?
No, that's, that's not my role.
That's not your role, okay.
I just did some poking around and, and was just really excited. Because, you know, we just looked at this data and we see these, these graphs and then we said, this makes no sense. And then we look more and more and then we find an explanation and then we said, oh, cool.
Um, the other thing is that you mentioned that you had alerts that went to the park service, um, email, alert emails? Is there a way that you, we can get, um, alerts to people on their cell phones through your company? Or is that, is that possible?
So at this point, um, we're entertaining two types of alerts. So the park, um, we're interested in just the wind, wind conditions.
Okay.
For safety of, of recreational activities on the, the reservoir. Um, so that's something we played with and we tried to set the variables. And they seem to be happy with it. We just heard back, yeah, they're, they're happy, they want to maintain this. Um, so we had kind of like a pilot study there. So I think that's going to be continued. And then the second type of alerts are these air quality alerts, air quality, not, not wind. So when, when benzene goes above a certain threshold value and particles go above and methane and ozone, when ozone goes, it's set at 70 right now, then bang, an email goes out to a distribution list. Um, and then it checks after an hour. It's not like you get an email every, every five minutes. It waits for an hour and if ozone is still elevated, you get another email. Um, and right now, you know, there's, it's a, it's a fairly small number of people who are on this distribution list. It's relatively easy for us to add more recipients on that. Um, you know, that, that's something, I, I, I don't make that decision. Um, you know, I think we need directive from, from you or from Jane, wherever she is right now, um, if you want to move that direction. And I want to warn you though, it can get pretty exhausting. Um, you know, for its ozone, let's see ozone, you know, typically reaches the 70 ppb at 11, 12 in the morning. And we had 20 days in the last month. And then it stays above 70 ppb till 9, 10 PM. So you get, you know, 10, 11, 12 of these emails. And I get them from four different sites. So I get, you know, 40, 50 of these alerts. It, it sounds great, but, but be aware, you know, you're gonna get hammered by these air quality alerts. And that's, it's not the most cheerful news. But in principle, the system is in place, you know, it's just, if anybody else is interested and want to give this a try, you know, it's, it's easy for us to, to implement that. It's already there, we just need to add an email address to an already existing mailing list.
So maybe it's something that we can discuss and decide. Because 20 days is a lot of bad weather for people who are, who have health problems. So I, I would like a way to alert people and to get these complaints out that these are bad days to the CDPHE and GOCCC. Um, so we, we need to work on that. Because it's just getting worse. Uh, you know, I, I think we're in a, a time when we need action. And, um, that's what your data is giving us, that the data that we need to decide what as a city should we do? How far should we go with it? Because that was the point of getting the data to begin with. So now that we're getting it, what do we do with it? How do we, how do we alert our residents? How do we protect health of people? That is really, that's our next step. So, um, thanks. It needs some thought and some discussion. So thank you for that.
Mayor?
Yeah.
If I can answer one question, um, regarding the CEMEX plant. I, I did want to say that we're tracking the plant operation. We understand that it may be reaching, uh, the timeline where it may cease operations. Um, ultimately, that decision rests with Boulder County, um, regarding an extension of the permit. Um, we are monitoring it for different reasons and we'll let you all know.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, that was a really interesting and thorough presentation. I, I, you suggested that maybe we would want a, an open house. I think that's a great idea. I think we'd all like to, I mean, I would like to go and see how you do that. So perhaps you could set something up in the next couple of months. Have you thought about the goats emitting? The goats to the west at Haystack Mountain emitting? I'm just joking. Anyway, just a thought.
All right, thank you very much, we appreciate your work.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's move on to Mayor and Council comments. Uh, Councilmember Idalga Faring.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just, I have a couple of announcements. On our open forum, the group from El Comit Day did come to give us an update. But I want to remind everyone that the, on August 14th, the vaccine, they're running a vaccine clinic. So, you know, that is an option, I believe it is at the, at their parking lot on, um, Kimbark. So, yeah, I didn't, I failed to write that down, but I am going to be there to, um, to assist and volun- and volunteer my time. The other thing is we all did receive an email invite from, I serve as the council liaison to the museum, the advisory board. And this Friday, what's it? Let me double check, yeah, it is this Friday, we all got the invite for their 150th open reception. The 150 year Longmont anniversary, um, their opening reception. Um, they've been doing some really great work and they've been working really hard to, to put this together. The work that Eric Mason has done for, with, um, the book that they have out, celebrating, um, 150 years of Longmont. So if you are able to, to attend, that would be, um, that would be great. And, yeah, I'll be there as well. So, um, yeah, and then, you know, just, I'm, you'll see me around with my mask a little more often. I'm about two weeks away from having students back in the class, being back in the classroom. And I teach third grade. So I'm just trying to be more cognizant, it's better safe than sorry. You know, they, they don't have access to vaccines and then looking at the numbers of positive cases among our youth. You know, last year, the pandemic, it was a nightmare. I had a former student whose dad passed from COVID. And, um, three students, I had one in ICU because of complications with COVID. So this is, you know, this is really serious and I'm just, I'm not taking any chances. So be safe.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman Idalga Faring. I, I am concerned about your having to go back to teaching, but I'm concerned about all the kids and all the teachers, you know, I, I think we all are. And we're just gonna have to do the best we can and hang on tight. Uh, I'm glad you announced the, um, event at the museum. It's from six to eight, I believe. And, um, you can dress up in your favorite era. And also, don't forget that Fri- that Saturday is the, um, uh, county fair parade. So, um, starts at nine o'clock. And, uh, we'll all be there too, I think. So, um, come to the parade and then come to the fair. Thanks, bye.
All right, I don't see anybody else set to speak, so we'll go ahead and say, City Attorney, anything?
No comments, Mayor? And I like going before the City Manager.
I know, I, I see, I accidentally crossed off Harold right there, so. That's all right.
No comments.
Thanks, Harold. Eugene, anything?
Nothing, Mayor.
All right, great. Can we have a, a motion to adjourn? All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Peck and it was seconded by Councilmember Christensen. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, we're adjourned.